And thank you for walking into the 2021 Village of Germantown Candidate Forum. I'm Deanna Bronchwood, I'm the Village of our treasure. I just want to say thank you to the Chamber Lynn and Jolene for allowing us to have this candidate forum this evening. And thank you to Dan and Hope for coming to be our moderator. So just a little information about the election. The actual election will be on April 6th. That is the first Tuesday in April. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. Absentee voting started in person in the village hall today. Our office hours are 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And that goes from this Tuesday until the Friday. And then next week, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 to 4:30. And then Friday, 1:00 to 5:00. As Friday is actually a holiday, but we will be open for voting purposes in the afternoon. Make sure you remember your vote ID. Currently, the village passes over 1,200 absentee ballots and trappings. And this time, I welcome the moderator up, Dan, to help us. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much, truly appreciated. A couple of words for the candidates. And the biggest thing that I always like to think about is that given the world we still live in, and thankfully, things seem to be headed the other direction now, right? We are very excited that we can still have this valuable approach for the village residents to get to know the candidates on the ballot. And first of all, I want to thank the individuals who are running for office. Sarah Larson, Tracy Pollak, Tom Barney, and Michael Pickett. These types of candidate forums really do give a wonderful chance for residents to hear firsthand what the viewpoints are of the candidates who are running. And it may sound a little old school, but I think it's one of the greatest examples of democracy in action that we can have in our county and in our community. The questions being used tonight have been pre-submitted by residents and a few by local businesses as well. And where similar questions have been asked, we may have consolidated a couple of them or just changed the verbiage tiny bit, but we've traded, stayed as true as possible to the questions that have been submitted. Given the time constraints, although we're going to try very hard to get everybody's in, we may not be able to end up using all of them, but they will be certainly a good sample of the various topics and issues that have arisen. Candidates will have the opportunity to present an opening statement of two minutes in length. And each of the candidates will get a 10-second warning for both their questions and their opening statements so that they are aware that they should wrap up that particular answer. The timing of your amount of time to respond will not begin until you've actually begun to speak, so feel free to take a look at your notes one last time and to reflect on those before you begin your answer, you're more than welcome to do so. The order of who answers the questions first will be rotated after each question. So this evening, the first question will be answered by Sarah Larson, and then we'll move to Tracy Pollak and so on. The second question will begin with Tracy Pollak and so on from there. As I mentioned, candidates will have up to one minute to answer the question. And for those of us, or for those joining us remotely, you will be amazed at how much can be packed into one minute in terms of information. Candidates will then have the opportunity to present a closing statement of approximately up to two minutes. If I could ask one thing, because our audience at home will not be able to see your name tags, and just to make sure they know who is responding, if they're keeping notes or trying to listen, if you could just please raise your hand as you begin speaking, that way the audience at home will be able to see that above your name tags where they're, excuse me, placed. And Tracy, if you wouldn't mind just saying, this is Tracy Pollak, okay? So, we are ready for opening statements. Sarah, are you ready? All right. Sarah Larson, if you could present us with your opening statements.
Perfect. Good evening and welcome to everyone present and those joining us via the livestream. Thank you for the opportunity to engage this evening. First, a little bit about myself, I'm Sarah Larson. My roots are here in the community, having grown up in Germantown and a proud class of 1987 alum. After pursuing my education and professional interests, I returned to Germantown in 2007 to raise our family. Both children attended the Germantown School District. My husband Matt is a proud veteran, and the two of us enjoy serving on the safety team at Crossway Church, as well as golfing and doing a little target practice at Daniel Boone Conservation Club. Professionally, I'm a project manager overseeing the power delivery for 5G expansion in southeastern Wisconsin, and have an extensive background in operations management. I began my journey aboard service when I was elected in 2012. Over the past nine years, my colleagues have consistently voted me to the role of Vice President. As VP, I chair the Personnel Committee. I currently chair the Insurance Committee, and have served on the Finance, Policy, Negotiation, and Curriculum Committees. My board service has provided an opportunity to volunteer at a Boy Scout troop, helping them with their Citizen in the Community badge. When the Vietnam Moving Wall visited Germantown, I was the board liaison and volunteered for the event. This is an outstanding community with an outstanding district that has served me and my children very well. I've been honored to play a part in guiding the district for these past nine years, and look forward to continuing the good work we have begun with a final term, if I have the privilege to do so.
Ms. Larson, thank you very much. Tracy Pollak, if you could provide your opening statement for our audience.
Thank you. I think first off, thank you to the Germantown Chamber of Commerce, the Village of Germantown for sharing their facilities with us, and all the people who are helping support this event. Just to mention this out of an abundance of caution, I'm joining you remotely this evening due to a potential close contact, otherwise I would have loved to have been there. I am running for Germantown School Board seat number one. Before I get to too many of the personals here, I always like to mention that I earned my Eagle Scout many, well, now it's many years ago, but ultimately, my wife and I have lived in Germantown for 15 years. We moved here because we knew when we would ultimately have children that we wanted them to be in a quality school district. We have three children. Our oldest attends Kennedy Middle School. Our two youngest currently attend MacArthur Elementary. I currently work as a product manager for a company called Arpidid, which is a London Stock Exchange company, where I lead a global team in building the next-gen wealth advisor tool for the financial services industry. There are three main reasons why I'm running for springboard. First, we owe it to the children to provide them the best education possible. Without having metrics to measure the effectiveness of the Germantown way, how do we know how we are doing as a district or how our students are performing? We need to define those. Second, we owe it to the parents to provide open communication and meet their expectations. They want to know what their children have been prepared for in life after high school. And so, in combining, in combination with the Germantown metrics, with the Germantown metrics, we need to provide the information to current and future parents and guide them as far as what they should expect their children will be learning. Lastly, I believe we owe it to the taxpayers to manage the money that's provided to the district and the responsible banner. Approving the annual budget for projected costs to the expected revenues is 2015-16 budget year is not fiscal conservative. Taking on additional non-referendum debt at the same time the referendum has passed, not fiscal conservative. Drawing down the fund balance to 3.5 million and now scrambling to close a projected budget deficit to 21, 22, 2.5 million, also not fiscal conservative. We need to get our financial house in order and transparency and accountability of our financial statements.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. Tom Barney, you're next.
Yes, my name's Tom Barney, I'm running for School Board seat number seven. I've been married for almost 20 years and lived in the district since 2006. We currently have three kids attending Germantown Schools, one is at Kennedy, and my two oldest are at GHS. From a community standpoint, I'm a graduate of Leadership Germantown, a member of Kiwanis of Germantown, and a merit badge counselor and committee member for Boy Scout Troop 271. I have been on the board since 2012. There's no sugarcoating it, this past year has been one of the most challenging times on the school board. The COVID situation is really a lose-lose for anyone who was in charge. We had an overwhelming number of parents who wanted their kids in school, and a very high number of teachers who weren't comfortable enough going face-to-face with all of their students at the start of school. We were never going to be able to make everyone happy or give them everything that they wanted. We were able to start with a hybrid approach, which gave everyone that opportunity for face-to-face, including five days a week at elementary levels. Thankfully, the COVID numbers have been dropping, and since the start of second semester, I'm glad that we've been able to offer face-to-face across all grades. And it will stay that way unless the governor decides to close schools. And even with the COVID challenges, we are still a high-performing district, exceeding expectations on state report cards, we have a high co-curricular participation rate, high ACT scores, and a high graduation rate. After today, you still have more questions for me, you can find me at votetombarny.com. Thank you.
Mr. Barney, thanks for that introduction. Our last opening statement, that sounds a little bit redundant, doesn't it? But our last opening statement will come from Mr. Michael Pickett. And if you could just raise your hand a little bit as you answer the question, thank you.
Good evening.
It is the school board after all, so you're asking for permission, right?
It is. Good evening, my name is Michael Pickett. I would like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum. I've been a resident of Germantown for 21 years. I am self-employed, but yet semi-retired after selling my first company that I ran for over two decades, so that I could take up an even more rewarding position as a parent. The job I am most proud of is being a dad. My children and their educational opportunities come first. I'm running for a seat on Germantown School Board because we need change. We deserve better from our school board. I have many ideas, and I am committed to making Germantown Schools even better. Almost all members of the current board have held their seats for eight or more years. And during this time, I have watched our state scorecard decline at least 8%. Our district ranking from top five to top 25, seen our debt increase to over $100 million. Our bond rating fall three steps, which means our borrowing has higher costs. We don't have a balanced budget, and we have declining enrollment, racial divide, and high teacher turnover. We still don't have a K-4 program. I mean, we are one of only five districts out of 411 districts in Wisconsin that do not have a K-4 program. I have a nine-year-old son that I wanted to attend K-4 in Germantown. I went to the district and asked why, year after year, we don't have a K-4 program, and was told time again, we're researching the feasibility. Well, here we are a decade later, still no K-4 program. So if I'm honored to be elected to this seat, my first action would bring a motion to start that K-4 program right away. So a K-4 program would bring in significant amount of revenue and offset our declining enrollment for the upcoming school year, which my understanding is now facing a $1.2 million deficit from declining enrollment. So would also opening more seats for open enrollment. I mean, it's time for meaningful change. Thank you.
Mr. Pickett, thanks for your thoughts on your opening statement, much appreciated. I will be reading the question for the entire group to hear, and we will have the first question begin with Sarah Larson, and then move to Tracy Pollak, and then Tom Barney, and then Michael Pickett. And then the second question that we'll ask this evening will begin with Tracy Pollak and move down the line, so that we're rotating who has first shot at the question and who has last shot at the question. All right, so this question wraps around an issue, they raised a number of questions from the village residents, and that is the one that wraps around social justice, racial divide, and cultural awareness. So you will hear a few questions in that area this evening. The first that I'd like to ask is, how will you train staff, administration, and anyone who works in the buildings about cultural awareness? Second half of that is, how will you include the community on this journey to become a more accepting place? Sarah Larson, you have this first.
We are framing our approach, and actions will occur over time, as this is a journey, and it's not perceived as a once-and-done, it has to be an ongoing action. The staff have already been participating in book studies, as well as we had guest presenters on Equity during a 2020 in-service. The volume of training resources on diversity are rapidly growing, and we will be researching which is best suited for Germantown. As far as incorporating the community into the journey, the newly-launched Advisory Council on Equity has community representation, and we see their participation as integral to building the bridges of understanding. One thing to keep in mind, though, with the diversity, is that it's often narrowed to something that is referred to as being black or white, when diversity is multifaceted and encompasses more than just people of color. It's different ethnicities, people of differing abilities, and socioeconomic status, so we need to be sure that we're not just limiting our thinking and perspective to this one particular lens.
Ms. Larson, thank you very much. And also, candidates, anytime that you would like a question repeated, by all means, please do so, because there is some time in between each person answering the question, I'm more than happy to do so. Tracy Pollak, you are next for that question. And again, let me know if you'd like to have it repeated.
Thank you. As far as training staff and anyone else that works in the buildings about cultural awareness and these other similar topics, I think we need to approach training as a process. As a former corporate trainer, and how I relate it to my current role as product manager, we need to identify and define a goal, you know, whatever we happen to want to achieve one year from now, three years from now, et cetera. And we need to identify and measure those steps to get there. So we're talking incremental gains. I think everyone would agree, diversity, no matter how you define it, is not something that is as simple as flipping a switch. So ultimately, with regards to this, we need to perform, we need to measure, we need to recalibrate, and we need to repeat. And involving the community via the Advisory Council on Equity and getting other community stakeholders involved, we can show the progress, we can get feedback, and we can adjust course as we progress towards a more diverse district.
You are next on this question.
Hello. From a high level, I guess there's two angles I'd go at this first. As far as professional development with our staff, that's one area that the ACE group already identified. And we have several in-service days throughout the year. I think a portion of those should be dedicated to cultural awareness, and even include guest speakers on cultural issues. But we also need to take that further and make changes to what is available to students and what's presented to them. Take the high school, for example. Every year, Mr. Farron meets with freshmen and goes through what's expected of them throughout their years at Germantown. He lays out the plan to make it to graduation day. Stay clear of drugs, stay out of trouble, get the required credits, and so on. Maybe more emphasis needs to be placed on respect for one another, highlighting our anti-bullying and anti-harassment policies. We also have a union in student association groups that were recently formed in the district. Take advantage of these groups and see what they can offer to our student body as a whole. From a community perspective, there are community members on our advocacy council on equity. I expect that that community involvement will continue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barney. And next is Michael Pickett.
So, the district needs to bring in equity training educators and offer learning opportunities and training so that all district employees can create a safe learning environment for all students. The same training could be extended in separate sessions for district residents to attend so that the district can become more culturally aware. Germantown School District can be a leader in creating a more safe and inclusive environment for not just its students, but also for the district residents. If done properly, it can help tear down barriers and biases that can lead us to a stronger community. I mean, I think we could collaborate with MPS, which they've had decades of working on equity, and if we brought them in and collaborated with them, maybe we could make some significant changes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pickett. Our second question for the group this evening is, do you or have you had school-aged children? And if so, how does it really impact your perspective on the work that you either currently do or you'd like to do on the school board? And this question will begin with Mr. Tracy Pollak.
Thank you. Yes, I do, I do have three current, or three children currently in the district. One attends Kennedy Middle School, the other two currently attend MacArthur, and our middle child's actually going to be moving on to Kennedy next year. As far as how it affects my perspective, number one, I'm invested, and I'm invested for several more years. I think it's certainly helpful to have kids in the district because you live it, you breathe it, and you, obviously, we all want the best for our children, and so there's kind of an extra fire underneath you to perform well, not only for your kids, but you know the importance of what the future holds for them, and how they prepare for future life after they graduate from Germantown High School.
Mr. Tom Barney, please.
So Germantown is the place where my wife and I decided to move when we started having a family, a growing community with great schools. My children all went through County Line Elementary, and we had some wonderful teachers along the way. Occasionally, the board needs to adjust elementary attendance areas to account for population changes. When that topic comes up, we hear from parents how much they love their local school. Well, moved, I would have had that same great experience. Last year was the final year for my family at County Line, my daughters moved on to Kennedy, and my two boys are now at Germantown High School. From an impact perspective, with kids in the district, I keep them in mind, I keep all the kids in mind with every vote that I have to take.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barney. Next, Mr. Michael Pickett.
I have two children, a first and third grader, they are attending Milwaukee French Immersion School. It was a very difficult choice moving them out of the district, but my son, when he was born, I began researching educational opportunities. After realizing that this current board was never going to start a K-4 program, I started looking elsewhere. My son attended St. Mary's in Monominee Falls for K-4, and then I came across French Immersion School. I read the research that establishes that bilingual children have a cognitive advantage over monolingual learners. Research establishes they are creative thinkers, better at spelling, reading, and arithmetic, and learn at an overall faster rate. French is about to overtake Spanish as the second most spoken language in the world. When my children return to the district for middle school and high school, they will be fluent in French and English. They will then learn a third language here in Germantown, taking full advantage of our exceptional Spanish program.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pickett. And wrapping this question up for us is Sarah Larson.
Thank you. My children did attend the school district, County Line Elementary, KMS. My daughter Reagan graduated in 2017, and my son Ben was a 2020 COVID graduate, so we fully can appreciate how the school year ended and what an experience it was for those students. And so, from the parental impact, we were able to go ahead and hold a separate graduation ceremony for the students entering the military, which I think a lot of our community wasn't even aware of. But that is how it impacts me, because I had connection to those families with students entering the military. So it isn't just about my students, it's about taking feedback from other community members with children in the district, and really looking and being an advocate for their feedback and needs to make sure that we're providing for all students in the district.
Thank you very much, Sarah, much appreciated. The third question for this evening is related to perceptions regarding the handling of the COVID-19 by the school board, and this comes from a community member. During the planning portion of school operations during COVID, some residents felt the communications from the school board with parents was lacking. Many parents made it known that their emails and calls were not responded to. If elected, what would you do specifically to improve the communications between the school board and the parents and taxpayers of the community in general? And, Mr. Barney, you have this one first.
Thank you. There are several ways for the public to be informed about board activities. Our meetings are streamed live in addition to being available for playback after each meeting. The Board Happenings goes out to give you a summary, and agendas are posted on the district website, minutes posted shortly after each meeting. As far as what we could do, well, I do appreciate the public comments section that we have at all of our meetings, but many times, these public comments are more like questions, and typically, the board's not in a position to respond to them immediately. In cases where the board can, I'd like to see the district publish a list of the questions that were asked, along with responses. Perhaps this could be included in the Board Happenings newsletter, might give someone more of a reason to read that newsletter. And we also need to look at ways to improve our video streaming. I realize that our video offering is far from ideal, and you can't always see who's talking, so I've asked the administration to look at other tools to see if we can improve that offering. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barney. Michael Pickett, you are next.
Well, in these difficult times, I think everyone was trying their best to make the best decisions for our students. The board likes to operate in secret and with little regard for the input of teachers and parents, it is no wonder why people felt left out of the process. The school board should have sought input from teachers, the actual people who know their classrooms best, and the students. If elected, I will personally make myself available full-time to parents and educators. I know this is a two-day-a-month position for most people, but, excuse me, my children's education is my full-time job, and looking forward to their return to Germantown School District is my focus. Improving the quality of Germantown Schools and the transparency of the board will be of utmost importance to me.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett. The next, or that question, next will go to Sarah Larson.
COVID was a fluid fire drill with ever-evolving information that no district in the country was prepared for. It was something that we all learned from and will be better for it in the future. We recognized communication during this time was difficult, as we were at times receiving 100-plus emails a day, and not always aware of who was responding or having visibility to that response. Our corrective action for future will be to immediately appoint a response manager so we're certain that all communication avenues are addressed. To our credit, once COVID hit, we began live-streaming our meetings and increased our meeting frequency up to the start of school to better assess the ever-changing information, because we did have a team that was meeting regularly that did include staff to formulate the response. We recognized that parents wanted a firm direction, but if we lacked, so really, it was a no-win situation, but in the end, I believe we landed on the right scenario with the blended and in-person for elementary.
Ms. Larson, thank you very much. Wrapping up this question is going to be Mr. Tracy Pollak.
Thank you. I did speak out, actually, during those public comments at the end of the August 20, one of the August 2020 meetings, and told the board and administration that they needed to over-communicate at the time, especially at that late stage in the game, determining what the start of school was going to look like, and all of the other various items that were going on at the time. I told them that the parents within the district needed to hear more information directly from them or the administration. In those public comments, I suggested updated date identifiers be placed in FAQ that was on the district website, which actually was put in place. I spoke about how the district Facebook page has over 2,000 likes, it's probably a little higher now even, and follows that they should utilize more as a communication method. Granted, I understand there's people out there who don't have Facebook, don't like Facebook, see it as an area of miscommunication and confusion, but it is a place for them to share real facts. Ultimately, it's a team effort. The board shouldn't have to answer all the questions, but they should play a role in solving for them.
Mr. Barney, you will begin this next question for us. And for all of the candidates here tonight, it is, how do you plan to attract teachers of color to our district to better represent all of our student population? Mr. Barney, if you could begin for us.
Thank you. The problem with attracting teachers of color is that there aren't that many in the candidate pools. A report from Brookings Institution from about three years ago said that 80% of young teachers were white. A report from Pew Research in 2018 backed up that report, saying that in public schools, only 19% of teachers were non-white. This isn't the Germantown problem, it exists throughout the country. Very few minorities seem to be going into education. I've recently spoken with Deb Kerr about this very problem. Deb is running for state DPI, and during her time as superintendent of Brown Deer Schools, she dealt with this issue. During our conversation, she mentioned resources that she used in the past to attract minority candidates, and maybe some of those ideas could work for Germantown as well.
Tom, thank you very much. Michael Pickett, next.
Our HR director could have job fairs in Milwaukee and meet applicants face-to-face instead of just posting positions on weekend. We could actively seek out teachers and administrators that represent the student body. Our current teaching staff administration and even our school board is 100% white. Our student body is 20% ethnically diverse. We should have a goal to at least try to have 20% diversity in our educational staff administration and even this school board. As teachers retire or leave the district, we should actively work towards this goal. We need to realize that we need real diversity and equity within our district. It's time for action, and I hope this committee, the new our district. It's time for action, and I hope this committee, the new Committee on Equity, will consist of more than just one or two school board members, but rather include several teachers, parents, students, and of course, people of color. I believe this committee must focus on all equity issues.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett. Ms. Larson, could you tackle this question for us?
Absolutely. As my colleague shared, the reality we face is that there is an exceedingly small percentage of minority teachers coming out of the university's system. Those who do pursue the profession tend to pick a school in a setting where their diversity is reflected in the students, enhancing those students' experience. That said, we don't just throw up our hands. We could go ahead and do, look at our own diverse student population and those that exhibit interest in teaching, offer up a program where we will subsidize the tuition, offer the student teaching experience, as well as guarantee a job following graduation. As my colleague said, we could tap into the resources of the state superintendent candidate. And another option would be to seek out individuals from the private sector, given that the licensing requirements are changing, and try and recruit them into the educational arena.
Thank you very much. And wrapping up this question for us is Mr. Tracy Pollak.
Thank you. I have a similar thought along the lines of what Sarah had mentioned. We can kind of take the homegrown approach if there are students that are interested in the educational field and work with them, and in other area colleges and universities, and see what we can do with regards to a good program to get them in our school district. But one of the things I think we absolutely need to do, whether it's a large pool or small pool of ethnically diverse teachers, is do what we need to do to make the district an attractive place to work, regardless of ethnicity. Once we start to do that, and the word starts to spread, we will have people knocking on our door, trying to get in here. We will be able to select those people who want to work with us. Ultimately, this too, we need to set goals, we need to set the steps, and we need to make meaningful progress in incremental gains. Thank you.
For this next question, we'll be going back to our beginning rotation, so Sarah Larson will be answering this question first, and then we'll proceed from there. What are three changes, three specific changes, you'd like to implement here in Germantown to improve the quality of education and the experience our student body receives?
A couple of ideas that I'd like to investigate and implement include offering a professional tutoring service beyond the after-school study skills, something that's not going to only help those that are struggling, but can also assist students and help them propel to the next level. A critical item is our learning management system. The feedback that I've been receiving about Schoology is not overly positive, and I think we can do better, something that creates greater ease for the staff, students, and parents, helping students to stay on track and informed of their progress. And there's a pilot program happening at KMS surrounding restorative practices, and it's focused on struggling students who are struggling socially, helping them build confidence and identify strategies so that they can successfully cope and have positive outcomes within the educational environment.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Mr. Tracy Pollak, you are next on this question.
Thank you. First off, we need to work on and actually create those metrics to measure the effectiveness of the Germantown Way. Since the board did change the approach with regards to not taking on Common Core, without those metrics, we truly do not know how our implementation of curriculum and the standards are working. We have to have a renewed focus on reading and math achievement. Those two subjects are hugely important to achieve success later in life. Our reading scores are about 54. Our math proficiency is 61. But when we look at surrounding districts that rank ahead of us, like Whitefish Bay, their reading proficiency 72. Mecklenburg-Vielesville, 69. Math at Mecklenburg-Vielesville, their proficiency is 69 compared to our 61, and at Hamilton is 71. I'd like to make sure that we do everything we can to prepare students for college and university, but I think we also have an opportunity to expand offerings, working with our community stakeholders, in expanding the opportunities for those people who college and university is not necessarily in their future, that they'd like to get into the trades. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. Tom Barney?
Yes. First, we need to inject some cultural diversity into our curriculum. When these students graduate and go into either the workforce or higher education, they're going to come in contact with people of all races, all different walks of life. They need to at least have an awareness for different cultures and understanding of their background. Another change I'd like to see is a closer review of our Start College Now program. We need to see if we can find a way to offer some of these programs in-house. Every application that we approve is taking money out of the district and sending it to a college or tech school. At last night's board meeting, we heard about 17 students going off campus for a nursing program. That's taken thousands of dollars out of our district that could be used for other programs. And lastly, and this will probably be controversial for some, we need to remove the underperforming employees from our district. I've heard of multiple cases where elementary kids don't want to go to school because they are terrified of their teacher. Elementary grades are some of the most important years for our students. We can't have them scared to go to school. It seems that because the teachers are close to retirement, we just let them be. We could be losing good employees because in the meantime, or because while we have these bad employees, the good employees just leave because they don't see anything being done about it. These employees are performing at a somepar level and need to be put on a plan of improvement. If they don't improve, they need to be replaced.
Thank you, Tom. Michael Pickett, you get to finish up on this question.
Well, number one, I'd like to attract and retain high-quality teachers from a broadly diverse background, and help those teachers with continuing education, to expand the world languages at the middle school, allow students to start learning languages in sixth grade, and be an active part of the curriculum, offer German maybe in the high, in the middle school. And I'd like to see French offered in the high school as well. Our most neighboring districts offer three or more world languages. With my experience with my children, with the learning, how much proficient they become by learning that second language, I think would help our students improve. Thirdly, I'd like to see, to us expand the CAP and the CC IHS program. Students can graduate high school and already walk into college with three, six, 15, up to 18 credits, depending which program, and I think the cost is $450 for most of those programs. So I'd like to see us expand that and help out families. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. On our next question, Tracy Pollak, you will begin, you'll be the first to answer this question. You may have. Mr. Pollak, are you back?
Yes. Yes, I can hear you now.
All right. So do you support vouchers, charter, and private schools, and please explain why?
So I'm running for school board. So, you know, based off of our financial situation right now within the district, I prefer that as much of the available funds go to our district. However, I do understand that there are instances where a child has needs that maybe the district can't be able to provide for them, the best education or the best facilities. And so I do think, as far as my opinion, I think we do need to be a bit flexible and I'm not completely against vouchers. I do support charter schools, and where it makes sense to establish one, we should, if it's something that's viable. As you know, or some may know, the district is working on getting a grant to research the virtual charter academy. And honestly, if the numbers work and it makes sense for the district, I think we should move forward with that. Ultimately, like I said, when my wife and I were considering where we'd want to move, we wanted to move where the best public school district is for our particular situation. Thank you.
Tom Barney, you are up next. Sure, I'll restate the question again. Do you support vouchers, charter, and private schools, and please explain why?
Thank you. Every family that decides to send their child to a private school, with or without a voucher, means less revenue for Germantown School District. This could be in the form of reduced general aid or a reduction in per pupil aid. As a board member, I'm concerned about the district's finances, and a loss of revenue is not something to take lightly. However, that doesn't mean that I'm against vouchers. I think families should have a choice when it comes to where they send their children. They pay property taxes like every other property owner and should have a choice on where to send their student. If the Germantown School District isn't offering something that another school is, families may go elsewhere, and it could lead to lower enrollment. A private school may have the draw of smaller class sizes or religious-based education, and those items are something that Germantown can't always compete with. However, I think there are items that our district has that give us a competitive advantage. Not many private schools can say they invested 1.2 million in technology for their classrooms. Private schools may not have a pool or performing arts center, and Germantown offers a dozen AP courses and several opportunities to earn college credit while in high school.
Thank you, Mr. Barney. Michael Pickett, you are up next.
Well, I support-
You're doing a great job of raising your hand and asking for permission. Thank you.
I support charter schools that are established as an extension of the school district and governed by an elected school board. And I support the school choice open enrollment program. But I do not support voucher schools that take tax dollars from public schools without zero accountability. They impact the funding quality of the education of students attending the public schools within the district. And we have, what, 3,700 students in Germantown School District, and I think less than 10 participate in the voucher program. But still, that takes hundreds of thousands of dollars from our school. The voucher program has taken $99 million from public schools statewide in 2020. Our taxes could be reduced if these tax dollars were returned to the public school districts. Germantown wants to start a charter school, but I think we need to look beyond a virtual charter to maybe start a language immersion or a Montessori charter school, something that would attract students to Germantown from neighboring communities, thereby increasing revenue. Almost 25% of students at MPS Immersion and Montessori schools are from suburban homes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pickett. And at this point, we have Ms. Larson to bring us home on this question.
It's our aim as a public school system to provide a high-quality education and experience for our students. That said, I support what's in the best interest of kids, and as we know, the same option may not work for all students and families due to the variety of reasons and circumstances. COVID created an opportunity for us to evaluate online learning delivery, which has caused us to move forward with examining the merits of creating a charter school in Germantown dedicated to virtual learning. A charter school falls under the umbrella of the district and does not impact our state aid. In fact, it could increase our aid should we develop a valuable enough offering that students from other districts would want to pursue us for their online learning needs. Regarding vouchers and private schools, I recognize those do take away state aid, but again, it comes down to what's in the best interest of the needs of that student and their circumstances.
Thank you, Sarah, very much. This next question, Mr. Barney, you will be starting us off with. And this was a question submitted from the village, from a village resident. Currently, our school district does not appear to have specific academic standards that it is held accountable to. What is your plan to adopt a set of standards for educators to follow and our students to reach up to? Mr. Barney?
Thank you. The board adopts academic standards on a yearly basis as required by state law. This was most recently done in September, when the board adopted the academic standards recommended by the governor's council and approved by the governor. Wisconsin holds these schools' accountables through the state and district report cards. Since 2011, the district has received and exceeds expectations on all report cards. This report card tracks our English language arts and math achievements, as well as growth in those areas. In addition, ATC results, excuse me, or internal items such as MAP, give us a good indication if we're on track or not. So there is some accountability from that regard. The principals are held accountable by the superintendent, the superintendent's held accountable by the board. In addition, the board has an ad hoc curriculum committee, which can make changes as needed if we aren't making our expectations.
Tom, thank you very much. Michael, you are next.
All right. All of our academic levels are held to standards set by the state or national levels. We have quality teachers that are certified in educational content. Germantown teachers are constantly updating curriculum, learning about changes to standards, aligning curriculum to these standards, and working in department and grade levels to collaborate on curriculum, so that there is a uniform curriculum that follows these standards for their level and content area. In fact, the district follows a regular cycle to ensure standards are followed and curriculum is updated. And the district is currently in one of these update cycles whereby teachers are working diligently district-wide on updating all standards and curriculum. But yes, the district does not follow DPI Common Core standards, which costs the district funding. And yes, there has been no movement on the Germantown Way. And as of right now, on our district scorecards, we still have two schools that only meet expectations, and the rest exceed.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett. And next, Sarah Larson.
As my colleague indicated, our district is required by law to adopt standards, and that is done yearly in the September timeframe. The state standards are the framework, and then more importantly, there is the curriculum we implement, which supports the standards. We have measurement and accountability through our state test scores, MAP assessments, advanced placement success, ACT results, and graduation rate. Beyond these measures, we undertook work referred to as the Germantown Way, where essential success factors were identified as the skills needed beyond that book knowledge that we believe lead to success in life. They include the student leaving our system knowing themselves, knowing how to learn, gathering information and distilling it, knowing how to collaborate with others, and having a growth mindset. Standards are a good framework, but the real power comes in how learning experiences are crafted, combining curriculum and the opportunities to build those essential skills.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. The next question, our first person to answer this one will be Michael Pickett. Oh, I'm sorry, Tracy. Thank you, Tom.
You didn't see my hand raised? So it's been seven-plus years since the Germantown School Board chose not to adopt Common Core standards and create the Germantown Way. Curriculum, as been pointed out, is a continuous process. There's standards that are approved every year. But I think the important piece to that question is held accountable to, and we don't have measurable metrics as compared to the Germantown Way. Ultimately, we need that because how can we measure how well the Germantown Way is performing without that? Ultimately, over the past several years, the board has had goals of an 81 or better within the Wisconsin School Report Card. Over the last three of the last four years, since there was one year that it wasn't measured, we fell short of that. We were only two compared to the, 83 gets us to the next highest rankings. This year, the board approved a lowered goal to 80 or better within the Wisconsin State Report Card. Ultimately, we need documentation available. We need to see things like a parent curriculum overview, so that a parent can go ahead and take a look and see, what's my second grader going to learn this year? Thank you.
Mr. Pickett, you'll be the first to answer this next question. The current state of this, and this was also submitted by a resident of the village of Germantown, the current state of the school district financial outlook is a large area of concern for the community. The referendum was passed through large involvement, interest, and support from the community. If elected, what will you do specifically to increase transparency with taxpayers on financial status, and how will you work to help improve confidence and show that you take the fiduciary responsibility entrusted to the school board seriously? I know that's a mouthful. I'm more than happy to reread it for any of the candidates. Thank you.
I think I got that one.
Awesome.
The district needs to stop wasting money. I mean, we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, for example, on blacktop maintenance per year to private companies. If we invested in maintenance staff training and purchased proper equipment and made those repairs on an add-needed, as-needed basis, instead of once a year, we could cut those costs by more than 60%. Instead of leasing vans and other vehicles, we could purchase them and have tech ed students maintain those vehicles, replacing them maybe once a decade instead of every four years. We lease all the Chromebooks in the district. We could purchase- We could purchase them and have a dedicated IT department that maintains them, extending their life. And let's review the Kinderburg property debacle. I mean, selling a $690,000 piece of property for $150,000. That financial hit will take us more than a decade of their tax revenue to even break even. That sale to Varidian Homes should have been canceled. That land would have made an excellent site for an early childhood education center or a charter school. I mean, there are dozens of ways of saving money, and I'm more than willing to put in personal time to investigate ways to reduce the waste.
Thank you, Mr. Pickett. Next to answer that question, Ms. Larson.
I understand the perspective of this question, as between the $84 million spent on the referendum and the additional work the board authorized, we're talking about a hefty sum of money. Through fiscal responsible planning and the help of Act 10, the board built up our fund balance while keeping our taxes relatively flat. The purpose of fund balance beyond rainy day needs is completing projects. Our decision to use fund balance was deliberate, as we did not want to raise taxes. We have a plan for restoring the fund balance, adding $250,000 this year, as well as amounts in successive years. Some debt is dropping off the tax levy in 2021 and 2024, so a portion of expense can be allocated as a replacement without negatively impacting taxes. This board has no intention of doing any long-term borrowing, only short-term annual borrowing that bridges the gap between the start of our fiscal year and the receipt of the tax revenue.
Sarah Larson, thank you very much. Next in line to answer this question for us is Mr. Tracy Pollak.
Thank you. First off, transparency. We need to not only continue to livestream the finance committee meetings, but we need to make every single one of them available online for review after the fact. Right now, there is only one that is currently out there, at least within the last few months, that being the January 25th meeting, which I requested be recorded and shared. As far as helping improve confidence, to take the fiduciary responsibility that comes with this, the board needs to pass a true balanced budget. Since 2015, 2016, the board has approved a budget whereby projected expenditures has been greater than expected revenues. Think of it this way: if you made $48,000 a year, and for the last five, six years, you simply pulled money from your $10,000 savings, that only lasts so long. And so I think one of the biggest steps in improving confidence is to truly balance our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak. And rounding out this question for us, Mr. Tom Barney.
Thank you. There's a lot to unpack in this question. For starters, I disagree with the implication that the district has not taken its financial responsibility seriously. The reason our fund balance is low isn't because the district squandered the money and went into bricks and mortar, classroom technology, and safety. These were real needs, and the board decided to pay for them with savings rather than a referendum to the community. Recent fund balance expenditures included $3.9 million to expand Amy Bell, 3.5 for additional classrooms at Rockfield, 1.2 million in technical education at the high school, and roughly 3/4 of a million in parking lots, changes at MacArthur to improve the safety of the pickup and drop-off process. In addition, we'll incur $450,000 in unbudgeted expenses this year due to COVID, because we put kids first, unlike Milwaukee, Madison, Green Bay, and Racine that didn't open five days a week. And yes, it's true that our Moody's Bond rating dropped from AA2 to AA, but it's still near the top of Moody's investment-grade rating, rated as high-quality with very low credit risk. The board has also tasked the administration with rebuilding the fund balance on a year-over-year basis. On the finance committee, I can hold the administration accountable for that board directive.
Mr. Barney, thank you for your response. This next question will begin with Sarah Larson, having the first opportunity for this. What do you think our district policy should be when students commit hate crimes or perpetrate racism in our schools?
Our policy specifically states that we will not tolerate harassment of any type and that consequences will result likely suspension or expulsion. As with our drug and alcohol policies, we need to put emphasis on this area, building the message of zero tolerance in our environment. Since our role is education, restorative practice, which involves building relationships and understanding, is crucial. We must understand the cause behind the action, as well as educate on why it's not tolerated. Though difficult and uncomfortable, I'd like to see the parties brought together, allowing the party to share how it hurt them, as well as allowing the offender the opportunity for apology. A holistic approach is more likely to change the heart and mind, as opposed to a solely punitive measure, which has the potential to breed further hate and separation. Our response on these matters can have a generational impact that we need to be mindful of if we hope to see real change.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Second up on this question is Tracy Pollak.
Thank you. The board policy site and page does say that the board is committed to an environment that is free of harassment. The board will not tolerate any form of harassment, will take all necessary and appropriate action to eliminate it and enforce it. Policies have been established for a reason. Should the board possibly review these, expand on them, lay out a process for review and taking action? Yes. Because ultimately, when we have this policy, the only way that people will actually take them seriously is to enforce them and follow through. Once people see that there is actual consequence to these different sorts of hate crime, racism, harassment, people will start to respond. Hopefully, they change their attitudes. Thank you.
Mr. Barney, you are up next.
Thank you. So I think our policy already covers this pretty well. Policy 5517 covers bullying and harassment. They can be nonverbal, verbal, written, physical, covering items such as race, color, ancestry, or multiple other characteristics. So a lot of that language is already there, and a violation of this policy could be disciplinary action, including suspension or recommending the student to the board for expulsion. This is a serious matter, and I think our policy allows for serious consequences. The administration just needs to take advantage of those consequences and apply them where prudent.
Thank you, Mr. Barney. Michael Pickett.
The Germantown School District needs to honor its zero tolerance policy on hate crimes. Racism, homophobia, bullying, harassment has zero place in modern society and absolutely no place in our schools. We need to treat each other with respect, and we need to honor each other's differences. Action needs to be taken now, not studied, not continued to be reviewed. We need to establish, we could establish, peer counseling, restorative practices, PBIS, and an honor council. Peers can sometimes offer the greatest incentive to learn from each other, and all incidents of hate in the school need to be investigated and dealt with swiftly. There will need to be some action taken, and one of the most important things we can do is just continue to provide education on racism to our students.
Mr. Pickett, thank you very much. At this time, the candidates have addressed all of the questions that are submitted in one format or another, so I'd like to give you a moment to pull your thoughts and your notes together in regards to your closing comments. For the closing comments, we will be beginning with Sarah Larson on my left, and we will work across the room, both virtually and in person. But give you just a second to grab your notes and focus on what you'd like the residents of the village of Germantown to hear as your closing statements of why they should consider you for the school board seats for which you're running. Ms. Larson, are you set?
I'm set.
Please go ahead.
It's been a pleasure responding to these citizen questions and sharing insights. I greatly appreciate your time in becoming an informed electorate that is so crucial in having a vital community. I believe the board and district are better for my service, and it would be my honor to serve another term with my colleagues, continuing our excellent work. My website is www.votessaralarsen.com if you'd like further information about topics that weren't covered here, or to dive a little deeper, given that one minute really doesn't capture the essence of a topic. Again, thanks to the chamber for hosting this event. Thanks to our parents for being engaged in their children's education. Thanks to those community members who don't necessarily have children in the district yet support us through their tax dollars. And thanks to our district personnel who continue to help our students learn and grow. Please don't hesitate to reach out to me with questions. I hope I can count on your continued support on April 6th.
Sarah Larson, thank you very much for your closing comments this evening. Tracy Pollak, you are next.
Thank you once again to the Germantown Chamber of Commerce, our moderator, everyone who helps support this event, the village, and all of the different people that I see attending this meeting live. Thank you for taking the time out this evening to hopefully become better informed. And thank you to those folks who may be watching on the replay. In two weeks' time, we head to the polls. Right now, we need to right our financial ship. We need to refocus our efforts on measuring how our kids are learning and take action to make sure that we are setting our students up for ultimate success. We can't rely on past rankings and say that we've been doing pretty good. We need to assume that districts around us will get better or continue to get better. We need to look to the future and raise the bar. I know our students can and will. I know our teachers and staff can and will. We just need the school board to follow through and give them the tools to do so. I hope to earn your vote and be part of that team leading our district in that direction. Please vote early. If that is an option for you, please vote on April 6th. I can be found on Facebook. Just search Tracy Pawlak, P-A-W-L-A-K, Germantown, and you'll probably be able to find my page or visit my website at tracypawlak.com. Thank you.
Tracy Pollak, thank you very much. We appreciate your closing comments. Mr. Tom Barney.
Thank you for your time today. Thank you to the chamber for organizing and for the village for hosting. My priorities for the upcoming term will include maintaining an in-person and fully virtual options for all grades until the COVID pandemic, increasing the fund balance to minimize and then eliminate the need for short-term borrowing, explore new revenue opportunities, and improve intergovernmental relations with the village board, the Germantown Village Board. They have a couple new members because a couple trustees didn't run, so it's a perfect opportunity for the school board and the village board to come together. I am proud to be endorsed by Washington County Executive Josh Showman and State Representative Dan Conodall. In closing, I think I have served the residents of Germantown District well during my time on the board. We've seen over $100 million invested in our schools during that time, some through referendum, some through investments from local businesses, and the remainder from the district's fund balance, which thanks to fiscally conservative management of our finances, had grown to the point where we could afford that investment. During this time, we've seen an increase in property values and driven more families to Germantown. Even during the pandemic, homes are selling in days or weeks, sometimes before the open house. Germantown is growing, and the school district is one of the reasons why. If you have any additional questions, you can ask them at votetombarny.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barney. Michael Pickett, you get the, actually, the closing closing comment.
I'd like to thank everyone that has joined us at home watching this forum and thank the participants and the chamber for hosting this event. I'd like to point out that I am a candidate for real change. I have 12 years' experience sitting on various boards for nonprofit organizations, for my children's school. I've sat on the district equity council, the PTA, and other various school organizations. And I want to make Germantown Schools the premier school district in Wisconsin, and I think that will happen when we do make some changes to our school board. We should make sure that we attract the highest-quality teachers and do everything we can to retain those teachers, something that the current high turnover rate of teachers suggests isn't actually the focus of this current board. They are reactionary and like to operate mostly behind closed doors. I want to increase the transparency of the operation of the school board and increase teacher and parent involvement with the overall operation. There is no real change or progress on the Germantown Way. It's just sat there for seven years. I feel this board has no proactive stance on issues that matter to parents, and I will commit myself to the district's success and would be honored if elected to serve all families of Germantown. And you can find on my Facebook page, it's Pickett for Germantown School Board. Thank you.
Michael Pickett, thank you very much. I'd like to express a few thanks to a couple different groups this evening. One is, first of all and foremost, thanks to the candidates for running and truly demonstrating their commitment to the village of Germantown, where they live, shop, work, play. And that's incredibly important. I mentioned to them earlier, it's probably the height of our experience with democracy and the chance to actually have people hear your responses to specific questions that they've submitted. Along those lines, I want to thank the community members, especially for participating remotely and for submitting the questions that were used this evening. Thanks to the Germantown Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring and the village of Germantown for hosting. And last, but certainly not least, please vote and exercise your choice. Everyone be safe tonight, and thank you very much for your participation.